Morning, if everyone will go ahead and please have a seat.
Marty is not here. Rob and Marty might be here. You'll have to.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May meeting of the UNC Chapel Hill Board of Trustees. As has become my sort of thing, I have, we have this morning with us two students, Ayman Benjani, a 2022 graduate, who is more than proficient on the violin. And we have Henry Knopman on the cello, who is a rising senior. So in the tradition that we've had for the last year, to remind us why we're here, I'll have, I would ask everyone to stand as we have students perform the National Anthem. Once again, I guess that's a really good reminder of how great our students are here at Chapel Hill. Let's give them another round of applause, please. At this time, I'll call upon Secretary Malcolm Turner for the roll call. Ms. Ottersneal.
Bullock.
Present.
Mr. Davis. Dr. Jones. Mr. McCullen. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. I am present, Ms. Van. Welcome. Mr. Chairman, we have a call. Ms. White, thank you. I believe Mr. Pryor is also present now.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. At this time, at the May meeting, it is traditional for there to be a swearing in of the new student body president to the Board of Trustees. So we'll welcome President Van and the Chief of Staff to the Student Body President, Victoria Bryant. You guys, if you'll step right up to the mic over there. And I believe Ms. Bryant, you're going to administer the oath.
I face her, don't face you. Okay.
Face each other.
Okay. I'm going to read this and then swear. "I, Talija Van, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution of Laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Further, I do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are and may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God." I did.
Congratulations, Trustee Van. At this time, it is my responsibility as Chair of the Board to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by the Act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Any member of the Board having a conflict or an appearance. Okay, hearing none. Let's move to the approval of the consent agenda, which contains several items. The approval of the minutes, approval of the risk assessment from the Audit Committee, ordinance regulating traffic and parking, designer selections as listed, Port Hole Alley, Davie Hall, Memorial Hall, Carroll Hall, and the Environmental Health Lab on the coast, advanced planning spending authority for water infrastructure, Davis Library Cafe, East Cameron Avenue Sidewalk, and property acquisition by lease for the UNC Nutrition and Research Institute. So this is on the consent agenda. Is there any item that a member wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Trustee Davis to have a second. I have a second from Trustee Meekins, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. So I'm here today, wasn't here yesterday, although I understand that there was at least one, maybe two Board members who made comment of my habit of running overtime. Really hard to stay on track today now, you know, I've been called on the carpet, right? So I do want to welcome everyone and a little, those of us who are a little older, I guess, remember Paul Harvey, right, the rest of the story. So Doug Debrick gave me a little rest of the story quip for today. I think it's important for us to remember that on May the 19th in 1807, the Board of Trustees resolved as follows. "Be it ordained by the President and the trustees of the University of North Carolina that every student who shall send to any person a challenge to fight a duel shall be expelled." So. I don't know that we need to reaffirm that, but I think. But, but one thing that does do is it kind of goes to something that I had said in my graduation remarks, which is the changing nature of the world and the changing nature of the university and how things change. I said to graduates a couple of weeks ago that the university will always be here for them, it will change, however. And, and that's okay, it's okay that the university changes. What we hope is that our students who graduate become a part of that change and contribute to how the university evolves and changes over, over the decades and centuries to come. I want to personally welcome President Van to the Board. Thank you for your service. I think you'll be a fantastic addition to the Board. At this time, I'm, I'm going to sort of not say a whole lot today. I do want to call on Trustee Van A. Patel for some, for an update that he's going to bring to the Board. Trustee Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, we heard from Michelle Bowles about the innovation program that's going on. And I wanted to kind of wrap things up, follow up on that and, and talk about the Innovation District project that's underway right now. And it's a collaboration between the university, the city of Chapel Hill, and the Downtown Partnership. The information's in the board book, but I wanted to point out a one pager that's out there looking, kind of giving details, and there's more details in the package as well. It's actually moving very quickly. I mean, I think the first phase of, which is the Innovation Center, we should have up and running sometime next year, which will be a 20,000 square foot innovation space. I think Michelle Waddell, who we met yesterday, were out there talking to companies and businesses that may be interested in using the space and being able to take advantage of the, the brain power that's available within the university. This would become the first innovation hub in a top five university in the country, which is, which is amazing. If you turn to the back of it, there's a couple of different things that are happening, right? So you've got the Innovation Hub that will be right there in Rosemary, then the Port Hole Alley project that's there, so this is directly across from it. There's a Life Science Center, which is a wet lab. There'll be almost 240,000 square feet, and we'll have 60,000 square feet of lab space over two stories, new parking structure, and a professional apartment building. And there's also a hotel and conference center added to this project as well. Once it's said and done, I, I think, not only for the university, but for the city and for the region, this will become an attraction unlike anything else. So we're very excited. The group that's, that's working on it is very diligent. I think Michelle and Cheryl and the group are doing a yeoman's job on it. And correct me if I'm wrong, Chancellor, I think Doug Rothwell has endowed a million dollars to ensure that the Innovation District and the project takes off. And Doug's sort of spearheading it on behalf of the Chancellor, the whole economic development process, which is the partnership between the three units. So very exciting news. I'm going to be excited to see Phase One open next year. And I was talking to Michelle yesterday. The goal is to be on the first and second floor of that building. But if the first and second floor aren't built out, we will have space on the upper floors, at least to get things going and then build it out. There are layouts and plans in the board book, so you can see what the space, the innovation space is going to look like. It's a combination of, you know, group meetings, small meeting spaces, you know, mass gathering spaces, a lot of different ways that people can get together and make things happen. So very exciting news, not just for the university, but for the entire region. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Patel. And that, that goes with the theme of, of what I started off with, the changing nature of our university. And, and this Board's commitment to economic development and the vibrancy of Chapel Hill and the 100 block of Franklin Street. We sort of put our foot stamp on that one a couple of years ago and continue to work on that. And I do want to take this time also, since Trustee Patel gave us a rundown, just to remind everyone and, and also for me to thank members of the Board for all they do at the university, it's more than just the meeting. This is when, when I. I'm looking at Teresa. But Haywood Cochran, when he was Chair and I came on the Board, he called me and said, this is a working Board, and it is. I know that members of the Board have served on search committees. They've served on panels. Ralph, you've been working with athletics and Rams Club. And there's just a lot of things that each member of the Board of Trustees does. And so I want to pass along my personal thanks for their willingness to step up when I call and ask. So I appreciate each and every one of you, thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Trustee and President Van for her remarks.
Did I do the mic properly? I think I did, awesome. Hello, everybody. Just to start my remarks, I wanted to say that I'm really glad to be here. I'm just really excited to work in this space. I think that I've got the opportunity to meet a lot of really incredible people just in the Board already and also just in these different meetings. And so I'm really excited to be able to utilize those connections for the benefit of our students over the course of the year. So far, the largest focus of student government, or my branch of student government specifically, because the grad and professional students, their space is a bit different. Our main focus at this time is just building our team. And so we have like a priority deadline of May 10th for some of the positions that we're trying to fill for like senior staff. We've had our executive branch team filled out since like April got started, since the time that I was sworn in. And so really just onboarding as many people as we can, so we can get those positions filled before the fall and continuing to fine tune our policy platform, what we want to do throughout the year as we incorporate the needs and like wants of people who we're hiring in that space. And so I think that's a pretty holistic update at this time and think that just working in this space, figuring out how best to work with our Senate so that I can benefit our students as much as possible is my focus at this time.
Thank you, Trustee Van. At this time, I'll call on the Chancellor, and I know that he's got some updates. And I think we'll also lead into additional information on the changing nature of our university as we move forward. So Chancellor Guskowicz.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. And I also want to welcome President Van. And I'm looking forward to working alongside you to provide, so that you can provide voice for our students in the decisions that we make together. And so really looking forward to working with you. And I also want to echo something that Chair Bullock said, just to thank our Board members. This is absolutely, it goes beyond just these meetings, the, the way in which you as Board members provide guidance, advice, and support on so many different committees and projects. And so it's a wonderful update by Trustee Patel on the Innovation District. And, and I'm going to, we're going to introduce here at the end of my comments, some new colleagues. And you're playing an important role in serving on search committees as well. So I just want to thank you. And also I want to thank you for, those of you, most of you were here for some part of commencement weekend, and that was really a great weekend. I want to thank you for being there. On Saturday evening, we celebrated four extraordinary honorary degree recipients. Eddie Smith, Millie Rabanel, Elginon Lamont Marbly, and Frank Bruni, who was our commencement speaker. That was a really special evening over at Hyde Hall. Sunday was a little chilly. It felt a little more like December commencement than a May commencement. But we celebrated in Keenan Stadium, a little over 6,100 new Carolina graduates. Nearly 5,000 of them are from the state of North Carolina. 530 were Carolina Covenant Scholars. And 788 of those graduates on Sunday, May the 8th, were first in their family to graduate. And that's something, as you know, that is important to us here at Carolina. It's something that we support and will continue to support and celebrate. The class of 2022, as you know, was a really special class. This is a class that persevered, they overcame so much throughout the pandemic. As I addressed the group, I talked about the ways in which they faced adversity and learned from that and the ways in which that will serve them as they work through, through, through life and their careers and as they face other challenges. I hope they'll look back on their Carolina experience and think about the ways in which they overcame adversity and will have learned from it. And I think Frank Bruni's message, and if you haven't had a chance to see it or, or listen to it, take the time to do it. It's, it's up on our university website on the YouTube channel. But New York Times columnist, Carolina graduate, very proud graduate, class of 86. But he spoke about counting our blessings and not tallying our slights. And it was a wonderful message for our graduates. And I know most of you had a chance to see it already, but take, please take a chance to even revisit it. Last week, as you know, we celebrated the new names on two of our university buildings on campus. Henry Owl, the first American Indian to go to Carolina, graduating in 1929 with his master's degree in history, was celebrated. As we formally put his name up on our Student Affairs Building. And then Professor Hortense McClinton, the first African-American UNC faculty member. And at 103 years of age, was able to be there to celebrate alongside us. She whispered over to me at one point, she said, no Chancellor, I'm actually a little closer to 104. And so I said, Ms. McClinton, we'll go with whatever, however your age you want it to be today. But it was a really special moment, and she was there to enjoy that special event. I want to thank Trustee Bullock for being there to, on the, at the podium to celebrate these two incredible trailblazers, really. And, and so that was a lot of fun. And we, I want to thank this Board also for making that day possible, because it would not have been possible had this Board not voted in support of, of an opportunity to diversify our campus landscape. And so we're, we're really excited about that. Finally, before introducing our guests for today, I want to highlight an exciting announcement that was released late yesterday. As we were convening for dinner at my home last evening, we received word that the READY initiative, which I, we talked briefly about yesterday, that we have been awarded $65 million for the initial three years of this initiative. And it will likely be closer to 110, 115 million over the five-year period. But that READY initiative is the, our rapidly emerging antiviral drug discovery initiative that comes to us from the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Disease. It's part of the NIH. It'll support research on antivirals to give us an early advantage against future diseases. It's preparing for that next pandemic or that next serious health crisis that we may face. But it'll be led by Dr. Ralph Baric and several UNC Chapel Hill colleagues from the Gilling School of Global Public Health, the Eshelman School of Pharmacy and the Eshelman Institute Faculty in the School of Medicine, the College of Arts and Sciences. So this is a really important initiative that you've heard us talk about on several occasions. Dr. Baric has actually spoken before the Board probably about a year ago. He's been a critical part of combating the pandemic, both here locally and nationally. But I think this just shows the critical importance of state funding. As you are well aware, we received $18 million from the General Assembly, in which many of you helped to advocate for. Had that $18 million not been provided by the General Assembly, we wouldn't have had that to leverage to get these federal funds that are going to really make this initiative come to life. So again, thank you for the ways in which you advocate to the General Assembly for, for funding. So I'm going to just shift back to sort of commencements briefly before I introduce our guests, because I've had the opportunity to, to give a few commencement addresses myself. And one of the things that we always do when we give a commencement address, we want to give advice to the graduates. And the one common theme that I have sort of tried to deliver and advice I provided to graduates is to always surround yourself with good people. Surround yourself with people who share similar values as you do, but perhaps view issues, challenges, and opportunities through different lenses and who will challenge you to be better and to get better. And I'm proud to say that we are doing just that as we build out our leadership team here. And we're assembling an incredible cohort of new deans and senior leaders that, again, you've helped us to, to do. And so last month, as you know, we announced Dr. Raul Rice to become our new Dean of the Husson School of Journalism and Media. He will begin July the 1st. And last week, we made several other announcements of, of appointments to our leadership team. And four of those individuals are joining us today, and I'm going to introduce here in a second and ask them to just share a few remarks about maybe what their goals are for the first 100 days of their sort of position here on campus. Valerie Howard, one of those new dean appointments, was not able to be here today, but she's celebrating her daughter's wedding in Columbus, Ohio. But Val Howard will become the next dean of the School of Nursing. She joins us from Duke University. And I know would love to be here today, and we'll bring Valerie to a future meeting. But I'm going to start by asking Dr. Janet Guth Miller, our new dean of the Adams School of Dentistry, who returns home after about eight years at the University of Nebraska, where she's been dean of their School of Nursing. And we could not be happier to have Janet rejoining the faculty as our new dean of the Adams School of Dentistry. Janet.
Thank you for that warm welcome. And I'd like to especially thank Chancellor Guskowitz, Provost Clemens, and the Board of Trustees for giving me this incredible opportunity to return to an institution that has given me so much. I was here from 2007 to 2014 as the academic dean at the School of Dentistry, an incredibly amazing experience, which propelled me then to become a dean at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. So in my first 100 days, boy, would I like to accomplish a lot. But I'll give you a little bit of an overview about what I'm thinking. I really see my role as partnering with the faculty, with the students, with the staff, with our alumni, with the Carolina community, and thinking about how we can build upon the tremendous legacy of the Adams School of Dentistry. And those are in the respective missions of education, research, and obviously service to this great state. So I look forward to that. I'm going to do a lot of listening and a lot of learning. And even though I have some Carolina history, there's been some change. So I'm anxious to hear about those changes, but also importantly, what the, what the school is doing so well. But how can we continue to make it better? So I am just incredibly honored to be with you all today. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity. And it's great to be part of the Carolina community at Tar Heel once again. Thanks.
Thank you, Janet, and welcome home. Before I introduce our next new colleague, I'm going to ask that we acknowledge and ask Dean Terry Rhodes, College of Arts. Just to stand, Terry is, as you know, is retiring at the end of June after 30, more than 35 years of incredible service to the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, serving as our dean of the College of Arts and Sciences over these past three years. She chose the really easy time to, to step into this dean role, but has done an amazing job. And so Terry, thank you and for all that you've done, will continue to do for Carolina. And you're always welcome back home. Thank you. So with that, I am pleased to announce, not to announce, we've already announced it, but to introduce to you Dr. James White, who comes to us from University of Colorado and will become effective July 1st, the new dean of the College of Arts and Sciences here at Carolina. And so Jim, thanks so much for being with us today.
Thank you all. I too. Is this on? Okay. I too would like to thank the Chancellor, the Provost, and the Board for your confidence and your, hopefully, trust in me. I'm extremely excited to be here. I'm humbled and honored to be part of this absolutely wonderful university. I was going to have a lot to say, but I want to keep, I want to keep, David, I want to keep you on time. So. I won't do that. I am, so one of my twin passions throughout my academic career has been the value of higher education, and particularly the value of a liberal arts education. I believe that's, we are the engine that produces not only the innovation, but produces the citizens that I think this state and the country need, particularly at this time. I would like to hope that I bring a number of skills to this job. I am passionate about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am passionate about research. I want to see really good faculty. I want to hire good faculty. I want to nurture good faculty. I want to see that research grow. And I'm very passionate about teaching. I think that that's, that is what we do, and that is a very, very valuable part of what we do. I am humbled to follow in the footsteps of a very fantastic dean. I will try my best to learn and listen and not do things that Terry says I shouldn't do. But I'm just very, very happy to be here and very proud, and thank you so much. Thank you.
I want to now introduce to you our new Chief of Police. Chief Brian James comes to us from the city of Greensboro, where he has served on their police force for over 25 years and has served over the past two and a half years as the chief police there in the city of Greensboro, comes highly recommended from an awful lot of people in Greensboro and across the state of North Carolina. So Chief James, I know you'll start July the 1st, and we are thrilled to have you here today. Thank you. here today. Thank you.
Chancellor Guszkowicz, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you to the Board of Trustees. I'm really excited to be here. People have been nothing but welcoming and and just very helpful, saying how glad they are for me to be here. I'm even more glad to have this opportunity. I certainly don't take it for granted and understand the responsibility. First and foremost, I believe that great relationships is what builds great police departments. And certainly, as I arrive on campus, my first priority will get to be to know the students, the faculty, and the staff, and making sure that we're not only looked at the the police department on campus, but that we're actually part of the community. I think that will certainly be the key to our success. But then also making sure that we're able to retain the great people that we have, but also that we can recruit new officers and civilian employees to the department, making sure that it's just a great place to work, but also supporting the one of the missions of making sure that the students here are in a safe environment and that they receive a great education so that they can go out and impact the world in a positive way. But I certainly am glad for this opportunity. Thank you so much for inviting me this morning to the meeting to meet everyone. And in case you're wondering, I've been a UNC fan since I was about 12 years old. I have a lot of I already had UNC gear in the closet, so I'm looking forward to adding to that collection. But I am a proud graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T, which is also a UNC school system. But but again, I am glad to be here. I look forward to working with everyone, and thank you so much for this opportunity.
Chairman and Chancellor, if I had just interject, trustee Marty Kodes, chief, who's not with us today, is a huge fan of yours, and I want you to know that's no small trick.
And I'd call on athletic director Bubba Cunningham to gear up the chief.
I already started that. We gave when we had lunch in my office, I started with with a few Carolina baseball caps, but Bubba will hook up the chief with some new Carolina gear. Well, actually, we're going to take care of all of you. Don't worry. But with with that, we're going to have one one more new colleague I want to introduce to you. Chris McClure yesterday asked Amy McConkey to stand up. But I'd like just Amy for you to join us at the podium. Amy McConkey is our new Director of State Affairs, previously with Vista Strategies, is going to do, you know, I mentioned earlier, the importance of getting, you know, the support from the General Assembly that leverages opportunities like READY did. And Amy is going to do an incredible job in Week Two, I believe, and is a Carolina alum, so she knows this place well. And welcome to the team, Amy.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chancellor, thank you so much. Members of the trustees, it is such an honor to be here, to be asked to serve in this capacity. I'm an '02 graduate of Chapel Hill and really the first in my family, my immediate family, to graduate from a four-year institution. So this school shaped me so strongly, and, you know, it really changed the direction of my life, and I'm so grateful for that. So really looking forward to shouting from the rooftops how important this university is. You know, you all know that. You all know what the research we bring to our state, to our country. You know the pride that the athletics program brings to the state. So my job is really going to be continue to rally that at the legislature. And we've got a lot of friends there to really build up those friendships, to make new friendships, to work with all of you in this room to do that. You're some of our strongest tools. So I've met some of you, look forward to meeting others. And the first 100 days, let's see, I'm on day nine. It's been a great warm welcome. The legislature has come into session this week, so we've got our work cut out for us. We've got some some big asks, some important asks around the School of Data Science. So we're focused on that while the legislature is in session. We'll have it in here through July, so we're going to sprint through that. We'll hopefully check that off the list, and then we'll work on really building up our relationships with internally and externally as we move forward. So thank you all so much.
So you are the four of you are welcome to stay as long as you'd like. Some of you, I know, are going house shopping and, you know, trying to acquaint yourself with the area, but you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. Did we understand that you have other things on your agenda for the day? But again, one more round of applause for the four. So as you know, at each meeting, we try to present and share beyond campus updates, just some get students in front of you and faculty. And so today, I'm pleased to to bring both faculty and students before you. Since I was dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, we've been talking a lot about the importance of experiential education and increasing opportunities for students to study abroad, to to get really impactful internships, and to get an experience in a research lab with our world-class faculty. And I could not be happier with the progress we're making in that regard. So I've asked Dr. Troy Blackburn, professor in Department of Exercise and Sports Science, and the associate dean for undergraduate research, to talk a little bit about that today and then to introduce a few faculty and students who are working together to to create these amazing opportunities for our undergraduates. And if we're going to be the, you know, leading global public research university, we want to start with our undergraduates in those research laboratories, and Troy's been doing a great job. So Troy, thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to come talk to you about the exciting things that are happening around campus with respect to undergraduate research. And can we pull up the the slides? Do we have those available? Right in front of me. I saw Chancellor's Economic Development Plan. We can funnel that to the Office for Undergraduate Research if we'd like. So when I talk to alums, such as my wife, my college roommates, and I tell them about undergraduate research, they're they're kind of taken aback. That wasn't part of their undergraduate experience. And I get some of the same, I guess, strange looks when we talk about all the work we did in the Quality Enhancement Plan to develop our new curriculum that we're launching in the fall. So why research? Well, one, I think we know that what our faculty are doing, we're trying to solve society's greatest problems, right? To drive innovation and to provide the foundation for classroom instruction. One thing that's incredibly valuable is that our undergraduate students get to be in proximity to that, to see those solutions being solved, but they also take part in that. It's also beneficial at a research institution such as this, where things can happen in the classroom, such as what you read yesterday on page 273 of your textbook. Not so sure about that because of a study that we just did last week. We're literally creating new information that informs the curriculum. But also, this is a way that we integrate classroom knowledge into real-world applications. It's learning by doing. It's taking classroom knowledge and using it to solve problems. And that is an invaluable opportunity. Another very important factor to look at, these data are a little bit dated. You see, they were published in 2013. But what these data tell us is that roughly three-quarters of individuals in the U.S. who receive bachelor's degrees are in occupations not directly related to their majors. So that says that the value of a liberal arts education that Dean White mentioned is that we develop problem-solving skills. We develop critical thinking skills, and it's not just the information in our major that's important. And research is one of the critical ways that we do that. So the literature tells us, first of all, that participation in research is associated with better academic performance in terms of GPA. Also, the literature tells us that those students who participate in undergraduate research develop better communication, leadership skills, tolerance for obstacles, independence, critical thinking skills, self-confidence, and problem-solving skills. These are all characteristics that both employers and graduate schools want to see in our graduates. So again, an incredibly valuable skill set for our students to to possess. I also get questions about who can do research, and I think the short answer to that is yes. We typically think that this person is the researcher. It's someone who wears gloves, goggles, and a white lab coat and messes around with beakers. And oftentimes, we think that it's only a faculty member, but we have undergraduates from English to physics who are daily participating in research. And this is me here in Chapel Hill circa the mid-'90s, and these were my career aspirations. Didn't work out as I planned, but some foolish professor agreed to let me join his research agenda, and it completely changed my life, right? It totally changed my career trajectory, unfortunately, I guess. And and if you would have told that student that he his career would primarily involve research, at best, he would have laughed at you. And it's not that we're trying to create researchers, per se. If that's what they want to do, great, but we want to instill in them the ability to solve problems. And so with that, that led us to the development of our new curriculum that we'll launch in the fall. And in that new curriculum, Ideas in Action, there'll be a requirement called Research and Discovery, and we are going to ambitiously require all 19,000 undergraduates to complete or to engage in original research as part of the curriculum. And what original research means is they're going to tackle a question to which the answer is not known by the mentor or the instructor or the students. It's not known information. It's novel. And there are two primary ways in which we're going to do that. I'm actually going to switch bullets here and start with the bottom one first. I think we're all familiar with mentored research, these one-on-one mentorship opportunities between a student and a faculty mentor. But there are clearly more students than there are faculty, so that's not going to be the only way we can do that. So in addition to the traditional honors theses and volunteer experiences and for-credit experiences, we've developed infrastructure which will allow students to get credit for doing research with faculty, through study abroad, through biotech firms, through governmental agencies, so outside the university and not just inside the university. Also, a very big part of this will be development and implementation of approved research courses. So just like a history, you know, history prior to 1776 course that has to be approved by undergraduate curricula, we have research courses that are approved, and the main criterion is that at least one-third of the course has to be dedicated to the conduct of original research. And a couple of ways that we're doing this to to make this feasible across campuses, first of all, something that my office implements, which is called the Graduate Research Consultant Program. And effectively, we we embed graduate students into undergraduate courses whose sole purpose is to help integrate research into the classroom. They don't grade, they don't teach, they just integrate research. And this is a really important factor for equity and access to research opportunities. The literature tells us that underrepresented minorities typically do not seek out one-on-one mentorship opportunities. This provides a level playing field for all students to get access to research opportunities, and these classes serve about 3,200 students annually. And as you can see in the pie chart down there, they're roughly distributed across all divisions of the College of Arts and Sciences. And we polled our instructors in these courses in the last pre-COVID full academic year, and 75% of these courses either meet the research and discovery criteria already, or they can be easily tweaked to do so. We also, as part of our Quality Enhancement Plan, embarked on a program to develop what are called course-based undergraduate research experiences or cures. And we're going to hear from an instructor and student in one of those courses here in a moment. And these are very different from your traditional lab courses. If you think about lab courses in physics, if you, for example, didn't show that acceleration due to gravity is negative 9.81 meters per second squared, you did it wrong. In chemistry, if the liquid turned blue instead of green, you did it wrong. There was a known outcome. These courses, though, are developed to to help students answer new questions. So the figures you see here are from a course called Seafood Forensics, where students learn DNA transcription. And then they go to markets and they they test the DNA of various food products to see if they're, you know, is this tilapia or is this cod? Is this are these fish local to North Carolina or local to Vietnam, right? So they can tell things about mercury levels in the sea, et cetera. These are new bits of information that students are discovering. Mentored research is still a large part of this. These are just some data from a few years ago, where there were nearly 280 honors theses, almost 800 volunteer experiences, and about 1,104 credit mentored experiences. This is just within the College of Arts and Sciences. So about 2,100 that year, and about the next year, we had almost 2,000 of those. Now, again, that is just within the College of Arts and Sciences, and we have several students who are working in the professional schools as well. Our office also, you can see these are relatively small numbers and things that we'd like to grow, but we have two programs for summer research, because summer's a great time for students to do this because they don't have the burdens of the typical academic schedule. So we have a small grant program called SURF, Summer Undergraduate Research Fellowship, where we fund about 65 students a year to engage in research. And then we also have something called the Summer Award for Research Courses, which is effectively a tuition remission program for students as they engage in these four-credit courses. And then lastly, something that I would love to have you guys attend next year, unfortunately, it's an annual event, so we'll have to wait until next April to do it, is something we run called the Celebration of Undergraduate Research. And each year, we have 200 to 300 students who present their research in poster format, and it forces them to engage with individuals outside their areas of of study and tell really the value proposition of what they've done, why it's important. We and we expect this to grow substantially with the research and discovery requirement being implemented. I'm happy to say, I was a little nervous about this year's event because we had all of our other programs were smaller because there were fewer students who engaged in preliminary research under the the COVID limitations to actually be able to participate. But we had more than 230 posters presented by more than 400 students this past April and more than 700 attendees. So we're happy to see that it's continuing to grow, and we'll do so over the next coming I think much more valuable than than anything I can say would be to hear from the folks who are doing this. We have with us today Gabriella Hesse and Dr. Sabrina Robertson from Psychology and Neuroscience, and they're going to tell us a little bit about a cure course that Dr. Robertson offers, which is called Molecular Imaging of the Brain. And then we also have with us Lauren McShay and Dr. Michael Fisher from Environmental Sciences and Engineering in the School of Public Health. And they're going to tell you a little bit about the Equip Lab, which is a really unique and innovative way to engage multiple undergraduates in very interesting research that has applications to environmental health and safety. I believe we're going to have time for some question and answer at the end of this, and so I'm happy to to answer any questions. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Robertson and Gabriella.
Well, thank you for this wonderful opportunity for us to come speak with you today about our research work together. Before I hand it over to Gabriella, I would like to give you some context for her work. As Troy mentioned, she did her work and was one of roughly 90 students in our neuroscience major to conduct research in a course structure. So in one of these course-based undergraduate research experiences, you can see a list of those courses here, and she'll be talking specifically about Inside 278 Molecular Brain Imaging and her work within that course. We have over 900 neuroscience majors, a major just started in 2018. So as you all were opening with remarks about the only constant is change, I was thinking about all the change that the neuroscience major we hope will bring in innovation. And so without further ado, I'm going to hand it over Gabriella to talk about some of her work, and then I'll wrap up with some comments about some data that we've collected from these students that actually participate in the cures and their perceptions of how the experience has impacted their careers.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson, and thank you all for having us today. Before I go over my work and also Parkinson's disease, I wanted to do a quick poll, and I'll turn around here, too. Raise your hand for me if you think that Parkinson's disease is more prevalent in Couple, women? Couple, and equally prevalent? So Parkinson's disease is actually far more prevalent in men and especially in the older age groups. So you can see throughout age groups, it's pretty equally prevalent, but then once we hit about 70 years, it splits. And so if I can work this later here, if you see here, right around 70 years old, we see that men are far more likely to develop Parkinson's disease. And so what is Parkinson's disease? It is a neurodegenerative disease, and some of the common symptoms are going to be a shuffled gait, resting tremor, muscle rigidity, postural instability. And so those are all related to an inability to suppress unwanted movement or initiate desired are all related to an inability to suppress unwanted movement or initiate desired movement. But there are also some non-motor manifestations as well. That's changes in smell, sleep, direction of bench, fatigue and pain. And they are related to a loss of dopamine neurons in the substantia nigra of the brain. And so we don't know exactly what causes Parkinson's. We don't know if it's genetic or environmental or some combination. But we do know that it's related to that loss of dopamine neurons. And there is lack of research into an important neurotransmitter as well, norepinephrine, in the development of Parkinson's disease. And so what we're starting to see as research in this field grows is that norepinephrine is actually required, loss of those neurons is required for some of the Parkinson's disease symptoms that we see. And it is protective against Parkinson's disease. And so what my group wanted to do was look at tyrosine hydroxylase, which is an enzyme required for the synthesis of both dopamine and norepinephrine in the LC of the brain, which is a region that's sort of the hub of norepinephrine neurons. We wanted to look and see if there was a sex difference in the tyrosine hydroxylase expression in this area that could then link to a potential reason for the sex difference in Parkinson's prevalence. And so that's what we did. We collaborated with the NIH to use mice that had neurons that glowed green. And we used immunohistochemistry, which is just antibodies, to look at the expression of tyrosine hydroxylase in the LC of male and female samples. We found that there was a borderline significant difference in the expression of tyrosine hydroxylase in the LC. And so that led us to two conclusions. One, there's a good reason to keep researching this field. And two, we accomplished a lot in one semester. And so that really leads me to the impact it had on me. I'm a very clinically-minded person. I'm attending UNC School of Medicine this fall. And I was not thinking that research would be something I would like to do or enjoy. And this class has completely changed my view of that. I plan on continuing research this summer and throughout medical school, because I see now what research can and should be, and that it's so much more than a bench. And even that is really fun. So with that, I just wanted to include some pictures. On the far right, you have my group and I in front of our poster at the presentation. And then some pictures of me and my work at UNC Neurosurgery with the robot and so we're in the cadaver lab. So with that, I'll pass it on to you, Dr. Robertson. She's going to go over some of the benefits on students and faculty. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriella, for sharing your work. She's one of our stellar examples of neuroscience students, and you can see how this research experience can have an impact on their career trajectory. And so we're going to talk about some more data. She's one of 80 students that have participated in Inside 278 in particular since its inception. And we've been collecting data from those students to better understand how that course and these course-based research experiences in general impact our students. So, and this work was also led by another undergraduate student that you can see featured here today. Her name is Sarah Ankeny. And so she was a student, just like Gabriella, in the spring section of Inside 278 in 2020. And rather than continuing her work on the nervous system, norepinephrine, just like Gabriella, she chose to focus on the data that we collected from students participating in that course, because it had such an impact on her. And so she was interested in seeing how this course benefited students and also how faculty might overcome some of the barriers to the development of these courses to offer more. So I provided a link in your booklet to those, to her senior thesis, if you'd like to peruse it at a later point in time. But some of her work has built on the mountain of evidence that we also heard Troy share, right? That these research experiences help students develop skills that are translatable, both in a laboratory setting, but also outside of the laboratory setting. It helps students promote positive attitudes about science generally. And it also increases the likelihood that these students will pursue careers in STEM. And we know that research experience, as was shared earlier, fosters this critical thinking that's essential. It illuminates the scientific process, which we've seen play out throughout the pandemic, and increases data literacy. And so regardless of career trajectory, students who participate in research, we argue, are better equipped to assess and analyze and tackle real-world problems and become leaders in their field, regardless of whether that field is STEM or not. And so I've shared one piece of data here. I don't want to bore you all with all the details. So this is one piece of data from Sarah's work on, from 278 students. It's called the Persistences in the Sciences Survey. So this survey is a tool that we use to look at students' perception of short-term research-related outcomes, as well as to make predictions about longer-term outcomes for those students. And as you can see, for all of the questions that we asked in this survey, our students strongly agreed, or agreed, as shown in blue, that this course increased their confidence and their ability to use research tools, to ask research questions, to assess their data, and gave them a sense of belonging in the field. And I think that's really exemplified. I've got two quotes here, and we have many quotes like this, but I'm going to read one of you, one of them to you, because it really resonates with the identity and sense of belonging that these students feel. And so the moment that we saw neurons was just absolutely incredible. And I showed the pictures to literally everyone that would look at my phone. "I love going to the convocal core for a similar reason. This was proof that we were being scientists and that something we had done had actually worked." So after these experiences, students have confidence in their scientific abilities, they have a belonging in the field. And what's more, and again, we talked about some of this before, but these CURES promote inclusivity by granting research access to any student. When we have 900 majors and 500 neuroscience minors and a limited number of research labs, it's impossible for every student to get a mentored research experience independent in a lab. And what's more, landing those really coveted positions, there are unspoken rules and expectations about how to do that. And so if you're a student that's not in the know, which is students that are first-generation college students or students from groups that have historically been excluded from STEM, then those opportunities remain inaccessible to you because of this hidden curriculum. So CURES break those barriers, right? They provide a safe space for novice researchers that do not have prerequisite skills to grow and develop as researchers, and then go on to land those next opportunities. So in addition, one faculty member like myself, in the spring of 2020, rather than mentoring three or five students in my lab, I could mentor 40 undergraduates simultaneously in these courses. And these courses, one of the best and most rewarding pieces to me is to watch how it breaks barriers beyond the course, right? Students develop workforce translatable skills. I'll give you an example of a student that's been in contact since they took the course in 2020. They are now working at LabCorp, and they were hired right in the midst of the pandemic, sharing how their research and critical thinking skills and the technical skills that they gained from this course helped them land this position and rise in the ranks to lead a team of individuals doing COVID-19 testing. So why don't we have more? All these benefits, I'm telling you all these good things, as well as Troy. There are barriers to implementing these. They're time-intensive and expensive to design. You support students through the process of science, which includes a lot of failure. We fail all the time as scientists. And you have to help students develop new skills while also facilitating discovery. We do not know the answer in a very restricted time limit for experiments. We had about 48 hours of laboratory time physically in the class that Gabriella had together. And she and her group accomplished all that amazing work in that short amount of time. And then, of course, there's limited availability and funding for reagents, the physical space and the equipment that we have. So one thing that Sarah's work, the senior honors thesis student, that she also discovered is that faculty can kind of lower the risk and choose easier-to-design CURES that are easier to implement, and our students still reap these benefits. And so we hope to publish those and encourage more faculty to start their own CURES and share that not only at Carolina, but with the broader STEM community. And last but not least, I have to speak to the personal benefits I have from participating as a leader of a cure course. So it opens brand-new areas of investigation. So this student Sylvia here was among a large cohort of students that convinced me to work on a gene that I had never worked with before called calcitonin-gene-related peptide, it's CGRP. It's actually released in your brain before the onset of a migraine. And turns out, it's expressed in the norepinephrine system that Gabriella investigated, and that there are quite significant sex differences as well in the expression of migraine, with it being much more prevalent in females and induced often by stress and anxiety, which the norepinephrine system plays a critical role in. So we're increasing our experimental power here, because we've got a lot of students working on this project, and we hope to produce publishable results, which benefits not just the students, but also me as a faculty member. And then it helps me meet those research demands for opportunity. And last but not least is rewarding. I am a scientist after all. So what's more fun than conducting science with my students in my classroom? I like to tell them, right, this course is not about what scientists know, but it's about how we think and how we tackle problems. And so we're going to train you to think like a neuroscientist and watch you land your next experience because of those critical thinking skills. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Lovely picture of our graduation here from our first full class of neuroscience students that had four years under their belt in 2022 here, and then all of the students and administrators and collaborators that made this work possible. So thank you for your time as well.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman, President Van, Mr. Chancellor, trustees. Thanks so much for the opportunity to talk a little bit more about some of the wonderful work that undergraduates are doing in the Equip Lab here at UNC. There was one request I made, which was, please don't make us follow the undergraduate student who figured out something new about Parkinson's. But apparently that went unheard. So we won't be talking about brain science today. But I'm joined here, so I'm Mike Fisher. I'm faculty in Environmental Sciences and Engineering, and I'm joined by Lauren McShay, a wonderful undergraduate student who's been doing some work with the Equip Lab, which is the creation of Dr. Amanda Northcross, who can't join us today because she is taking some much-deserved travel time with her husband, but was kind enough to join us in absentia and record a brief video, talking a little bit about some of the undergraduate research going on in her Equip Lab, which is environmentally-engaged communities and undergraduate students investigating for public health protection. And this work focuses on environmental justice challenges around air and water quality relevant to populations that are historically disadvantaged and underserved in North Carolina, and really creates some impactful synergistic opportunities for undergraduates. So I'll let Dr. Northcross give a brief overview, and then I'll talk at you just a little, and then you get to hear from Lauren about her amazing research.
My name is Amanda Northcross, and I'm Associate Teaching Professor in the Department of Environmental Science and Engineering, and I lead the Equip Lab. Equip Lab is a learning community designed to provide undergraduate students the opportunity to participate in research for as many as four years. We use community-engaged research approaches. We focus on research that helps to reduce health inequities across the state of North Carolina. We primarily work in the eastern part of the state, and prioritize working with communities that are vulnerable populations, including Black, Indigenous, Latinx, low-income, and rural communities. Students enter the lab through our first year seminar, for a 100-level course, where they work in various modules. They develop research questions that are responsive to our community needs. And based within our ongoing research partnerships, we have developed, focused on air quality, working with USCPA, and the School of Nursing, as well as the local tribe. And on water quality, we are working with the UNC Water Institute, the Institute for the Environment, Warren County Partners, the partners, and the local tribe, the community partners as well. Students develop their own research questions, rationale, and research approach, and we make sure they get
bit about some of the water quality work that Equip Lab student teams have done. And again, this is just one piece of the work. There's also students doing incredibly innovative things in air. But one of the first things that we recognized when we thought about how students are going to partner with underserved communities to address environmental justice problems in the state is the evidence isn't always there. And when we think about emerging and under-recognized water quality challenges, there are really important opportunities for K-12 students and teachers in the state, for citizen science groups, for student researchers to work together to get more and better evidence just characterizing the occurrence of chemical and microbial hazards in drinking water and environmental systems in the state, where we don't necessarily have all the evidence that we need. And so there've been tremendous efforts by undergraduate teams doing really innovative work to develop new and lower-cost and faster and better ways of testing water quality in private wells that isn't getting tested right now. And Lauren's going to talk more about that. And supporting citizen science teams and groups in the state that want to know more about the safety of the rivers, lakes, and other surface waters that serve them in terms of recreation, fisheries, and other uses. But they don't necessarily have the funding, support, and expertise to figure out everything they want. And so that's an area where undergraduates can really shine. And one of the things that I notice about our UNC undergraduate teams is nobody's told them what can't be done yet. And so they are willing to take on things that a lot of times funders and faculty and graduate students look at that, and they're like, I don't know, not really sure if that's going to work. And they have blown us away every time in terms of not just the work they do in the lab, but also their energy and eagerness to collaborate with K-12 students, teachers, and advisory bodies, with community groups and organizations in underserved communities to find out what's needed, what people want to know, and how we can develop the science and the innovations to support that. So we've had more successful student teams and projects than we can talk about in a few minutes here. But a lot of these have been developing and innovating new ways to test water quality and opt-in ways to let citizen scientists and K-12 classrooms not just answer these questions, but also share the data when they choose to in the future with open dashboards to help connect them with researchers, with local county and state government, so that they can turn that evidence into action. And just a few examples, here's a student team that's looking at low-cost water testing strips. And one of the things that they figured out really quick is some of them work, some of them don't. The science hasn't been done to validate which ones are suitable for private well users to understand if their water's safe from things like manganese, where again, we're just getting emerging evidence about how important understanding manganese is for child development. And that's present in a lot of places in the state. And not only were they able to identify which of these low-cost strips are suitable for that, but they were also able to collect high-quality images that we can potentially use to link some of these data with the WellAware app, which is a free mobile app that enables citizen scientists and well users to do well water quality testing with good, robust results. But not only that, but connects you to local county resources in terms of, okay, I've detected manganese or E. coli in my well at a level of concern, now what? And so that's one of the things that student teams are doing. And by the way, WellAware was developed by mostly grad And by the way, WellAware was developed by mostly graduate with the support of undergraduate students here at UNC. And it also helps us incorporate these in things like low-cost water quality kits that Aquagenics is putting together with solutions developed here at UNC. Here's another example of an Equip Lab team that said, okay, well turbidity, right? How cloudy the water is is a really good early warning sign of water quality issues, especially in private wells. But a lot of times we want to know about turbidity levels that are more sensitive than what our eye can detect. And $1,000 turbidometer does that great, but private well users don't have $1,000. Well, they figured out that they can develop a very low-cost 3D printable tube and take a standard test image that was developed half a century ago, plus the camera and the computation power in the smartphone that 80% of rural folks have in their pockets nowadays. And they can produce really high-quality turbidity measurements very quickly that are every bit as good as what we can get with this $1,000 turbidometer. And again, this is one of the things that, you know, when you pitch it to faculty, they're like, yeah, I don't think it's going to work. But this team just blew us away with what they were able to do as undergraduates. And finally, we've got Lauren, who you've all actually been waiting to hear, talking a little bit about some of the microbial hazards that are really important to folks on private wells in North Carolina, and how Equip Lab teams and undergraduate research is addressing those.
Thank you. So my name is Lauren, like Dr. Fisher said. And I've gotten the experience to work with Equip Lab in the freshman seminar version of the course and moved on to the advanced equip version of the course. And this past semester, I focused on developing low-cost incubation systems for E. coli testing to hopefully increase the accessibility to water quality testing here in North Carolina. The access to water quality and water quality testing here is a big health issue because nearly a third of our state population relies on well water that is not regulated or regularly tested by the state government for contamination. And E. coli testing is one very important part in this process of water quality monitoring because it is a very strong indicator of harmful microbial contamination that can lead to waterborne illness. However, this type of testing typically requires lab incubation that, like Dr. Fisher was talking about, like with the turbidity meter, can be very costly and time-consuming for private well users. So low-cost incubation systems are one solution to this health issue and have the potential to increase access to water quality testing and education here in our state. And this really fulfills the goal of Equip Lab to connect undergraduates like myself to local communities and really work at bettering the health awareness and health equity in these local communities. And so to tackle this goal, we looked at existing incubators made for E. coli culturing in areas with low resources or low technological resources and warmer climates, and considered these different systems, then altered them so that they could perform in 20 degrees Celsius conditions or room temperature conditions that a North Carolina household would likely have access to. The system was really simple and included tin quart styrofoam cooler that retailed for about $5. And then the idea behind this was using water as a heat source and having users manually replace the water bottles as needed. So very low-tech. The entire cost of the system would be $5 to $10, which is hundreds of dollars cheaper than a typical lab incubator. And so during the initial experimentation with the heat source to determine what temperatures we needed, how frequently they would need to be replaced, would this even be possible or practical for a working parent of a household on well water? We used temperature sensors inside of the incubation systems to record the interior temperature of the system. Our main goal was to remain in the temperature range of 25 to 40 degrees Celsius because this is the optimal temperature range for E. coli culturing. And we were able to successfully do that with heating the heat source to 75 degrees Celsius and using the aid of an aluminum foil interior. And like we've said throughout all these presentations, for me personally, this, although it might not be a big feat for me personally, it gave me a lot of confidence in my science that something that I was able to look at mathematically and kind of draw up an idea actually worked and was able to be verified by experimental science. It was a really cool moment for me. And the next steps of this kind of design or the development of this incubation system would be to determine the ability of the incubation system to work with actually E. coli samples and testing it in comparison to lab incubated samples and creating a real and working product that can be given to communities and get actual citizen science working. This type of system, because it deals with materials that are mostly common household items or very easily accessible, would be, and it's very low maintenance, would work best for like a homeowner or a home situation. And another group in our Equip Lab dealt with more of the education goals and the education side of the Equip Lab and created a larger system of incubation that could be used in a K through 12 setting. And in collaboration together, we just really hope to provide real and finished products that could increase community health education and community water quality access and just fulfill these goals of the Equip Lab to really connect undergraduate research with local communities and make real change in people's health access and equity.
Then I think Dr. Fisher is going to say a few more words.
So we were really impressed with Lauren's results because, again, it's something that can be distributed, open source, on a website using household items, heat up the water bottle, change it once. And this solves a problem for folks who want to know about their well-water quality, particularly during extreme weather events, when a lot of folks can't get out there to sample when you need to get the information most. For our sort of community partners, K through 12 classrooms and citizen science groups who might want to monitor several samples at once, we had the next higher-up-in-cost version, a different undergraduate team, figured out that we can replicate that same temperature range pretty much indefinitely with an $8 outlet timer, the kind that, you know, you use to put your lights on a timer when you go away for vacation, like Dr. Northcross, and keep the temperature in this 25 to 40 C sweet spot to incubate multiple water quality tests, like, for example, these compartment bag tests on the lower left, which is a low-cost semi-quantitative microbial test developed here at UNC, and which another student team figured out how we can also use that to test for antibiotic-resistant microbes in the environment. So tremendous work that undergraduates are doing here. And the next step is these teams will be working with community partners with K through 12 classrooms to say, okay, well, we figured out the science. Now tell us what's wrong with it that doesn't meet your needs in the real world. So we can go back and iterate until you're empowered to generate the evidence to solve these problems. And then these student teams with staff and faculty support are going to continue those relationships with communities to work on those problems. We don't have the answer, but we're still going to be there to build that trust over time so that as undergraduates are developing these new solutions, there will be increasing partnerships over time where they can really leverage those efforts to address issues that are important for North Carolina. So I want to thank all these folks and many more who made it possible. But if there's time for questions, I know you really want to talk to our undergraduates. So thanks very much.
Thank you again for having us all. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, any board members, I want to know if they had any questions of you or anybody. Anybody on the board have any questions? Yeah, Trustee Van?
Absolutely. Great question. The, we have cure classes that have been implemented in English, history, political science, public policy, chemistry, biology, biomedical engineering. So, and there's been a growing effort over the past five years to try to, you know, how do we develop those courses so that it isn't, you're not requiring someone not in the sciences to do research in the sciences?
Any trustees have any other questions? I do have a question. It can be for either Dr. Blackburn, Dr. Robertson, or Dr. Fisher. Whether you've seen, at least, maybe even just anecdotally, the undergraduate research compelling students to move to a higher degree? Whether that has been a spark for them to move to a higher degree? And kind of what are you experiencing with that?
So not from data that we have collected per se, but the literature, there's ample literature out there that says that students who engage in research are much more likely to pursue graduate degrees.
Great. And one other thing I will do want to point out as a citizen of the Cape Fear River Basin, I really appreciate the water testing. Thank you. Very important for the citizens, particularly in that region. And I'm going to turn it over. I know the chancellor has something. But I do want to say that I do wish I was a student today. Things have changed quite a bit. I am pretty sure, though, that I couldn't keep up. You guys are amazing and really, really, really am proud that you are doing what you're doing here at Carolina.
Just add one thing again. One of the things that I noticed with undergraduate students who do undergraduate research, if they are inspired to do a graduate program, which we do, I'm just to make sure that that's an option. Now I can write them a letter that is compelling and specific that I never could have written if they were just one of 40 or 400 talents in the class. And that's really great because it surfaces the talents that they want to showcase if graduate work or work in another field. I just love being able to
Trustee White.
Dr. Blackburn, I just want to say thank you as a parent of someone whose 14-year-old son thinks he's going to be an MLB player. I appreciate you showing us your preliminary career aspirations. But all kidding aside, the statistic of 27% of the jobs that are directly related to the major, I think, is really interesting and telling to liberal arts education. So thank you for doing this and considering the student as a whole. And Dr. Robertson, I loved what you said about we're tackling questions. It's not what you know, but how you think and tackle questions. So thank you, guys. I think this is fantastic.
I'll turn it over to the chancellor, who, by the way, reminded me that my son, who is a rising senior, actually presented one of those posters this semester. So Chancellor, go.
And as did mine. But, and this is fantastic. And Troy, thank you for your leadership. I'm glad you decided to pursue the research career. And, but he does play a really good guitar. I will say that. So he's very talented, multi-talented. But thanks to our faculty, mentors, students, outstanding presentations. I think, you know, as I look back at this, I talk often about the, you know, what are the uniquely Carolina initiatives? I use that often, talk about what we're doing different and better than most places. And I think this is clearly one of them. We built it right into our new general education curriculum, and we're proud of that. And we're preparing the next generation of leaders and that is going out and asking the important questions to solve the society's greatest challenges. So thank you. This is fantastic.
Thank you for having us this morning. Thank you.
To stay consistent with my staying off schedule, I am. But Trustee McCullin, I promise you, I'll make it up time. We'll take a 10-minute break. Okay, everybody, we could come on back to order. Trustee Makin. Ralph? We know that, and we appreciate it because we know you've got concerns about the water in Shelby. Great. I'll bring us back to order. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Trustee Malcolm Turner, who is vice chair of the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee, served as chair yesterday for a report from the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Bolick, and Board of Trustee Members. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management yesterday, May 18. The committee voted to approve the Risk Assessment and Fiscal Year 2023 Internal Audit Work Plan that details the Office of Internal Audits' plan for internal audit engagements developed through the risk assessment processes completed by that office. The work plan is available in Board Effect and was approved on the consent agenda this morning. The committee also heard from George Battle, Vice Chancellor for Institutional Integrity and Risk Management, presenting an overview of the Office of Institutional Integrity and Risk Management. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Secretary Turner. And since Vice Chancellor Battle's committee, he reports to that committee. I did want to take the opportunity at this time to thank Captain Holland for his service as interim chief of police for the last year. Captain Holland, if you'd stand up, we'd like to thank you for your So at this time, I'll move to Trustee Pryor for a report from Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report covers items discussed during the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure yesterday, May 18. The committee reviewed and voted to approve the ordinance regulating traffic and parking effective August 15, 2022. It also considered and approved several advanced planning spending authority requests, designer selection requests, and a property acquisition by lease for the UNC Nutrition Research Institute. Detailed information about each request is available in Board Effect. All of these items were approved by the board as part of the consent agenda this morning. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Chairman Pryor. This time, I'll turn to Trustee Ali Ray McCullin for a report on External Relations. I know that, Trustee McCullin, you got some items in closed session, but we'd like to hear a report on the other matters. Thank you.
Report covers items discussed during the open session of the Committee on External Relations yesterday. During our meeting, the committee received a legislative update from Chris McClure, Senior Advisor to the Chancellor and Chief Strategic Officer, and Kelly Dockham, Director of Federal Affairs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my report for open session.
Thank you, Chairman McCullin. At this time, I'll call on Chairman, Trustee Jones, Chairman of the Strategic Initiatives Committee for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Bolick and Board of Trustees Members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives yesterday, May 18. During our meeting, the committee received a presentation from Michelle Bowles, Chief Innovation Officer and the Executive Director for Innovate Carolina, giving an overview of the innovation economic development programs at the university. The committee also briefly discussed its support for universities' career service programs and the ways in which they can be further supported and grown in pursuit of serving our students. There were no items for action by the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Chairman Jones, thank you. I know you've done a lot of work in that committee. And I know that there are a lot of initiatives moving forward that we'll be excited about taking some action on in the next couple of meetings. Thank you for all your hard work on that. At this time, I would note that I'm At this time, I would note that I'm almost back on schedule. I'm really close. I'm really close. And I'm going to call on secretary for a motion to go into closed session. But before I do so, want to remind everybody the purpose of closed session and why we go into closed session. Under the general statutes for open meetings laws, we will go into closed session to discuss items in this meeting that relate to external relations. Mostly that relates to maybe some items like honorary degrees, distinguished alumni awards, DAVEY awards, those type of things. And university affairs primarily deals with personnel matters. And if there are final actions taken on those personnel matters, we will then come back to open session to take final action on those personnel matters where appropriate, if they are final. And then finally, we go into closed session for legal updates, which is fairly standard because there is confidentiality and there are legal matters that must remain confidential between client and attorney, and the client being the university and the attorneys being our general counsel and sometimes outside counsel. So with that, as a summary of why we go into closed session, I would call on secretary Turner for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under Section 126-22 and also pursuant to Section 143-318.11A2, A3, A5, and A6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a second from trustee Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to go in closed session, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, we will be in closed session. So if those who are not necessary would go ahead and clear the room and we'll all stay here. And this Neil, who served as chair of the University Affairs Committee this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Bolick and Board of Trustee Members, this report covers items discussed during the open session meeting of the Committee on University and Artists yesterday, May 18. The committee voted to approve a request for authorization to establish the Institute for Convergent Science. This new center will further enhance the university's stature as a leader in research application, translation, and commercialization to match its standing as a powerhouse of fundamental research. It will bring together scholars, researchers, and students from all the schools of the university to make discoveries or solve technological challenges that can only be addressed through a convergence of disciplinary expertise. On behalf of the committee, I move to request approval of the request for authorization to establish the Institute for Convergent Science.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. Good luck. Provost Clemens.
The committee also voted to approve the university's annual HR compliance management flexibility report, which would be, which will be submitted to the UNC system office. So on behalf of the committee, I move to request approval of the annual management flexibility report.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, passes. Thank you.
Finally, the committee heard an update from Katie Musgrove, Chair of Employee Forum. In closed session, we discussed requested personnel action items, including 22 promotions conferring tenure, six new appointments conferring tenure, 11 faculty compensation actions, and a contract amendment for an athletic coach. 10 of the faculty compensation actions and the athletic coach contract amendment were approved by the committee in closed session because they require further action. The remaining require our vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the remaining requested final personnel action items, including 22 promotions conferring tenure, six new appointments conferring tenure, and one final faculty compensation action.
We have a motion and a second. Vice Chancellor McGinn, those final actions will be posted?
Yes, they will be posted. We're working through the details.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Those actions pass.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from trustee Davis to adjourn and a second from trustee Patel. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.